Okay, well, I guess we can get started then. Okay. This is the regular meeting of Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six thirty P. M. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and our first order of business would be to stand and say, pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated. Would the secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg, he's asked to be excused. Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Bazi has asked to be excused, and Commissioner Daniels, we're, hopefully, will arrive maybe later. You do have a quorum with four members, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next, we need approval of the agenda. Need a motion?
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments or corrections?
Chairperson May.
Yes.
I had one question, maybe just a point of order. I know when the agenda item G came before us in April, we had a public hearing. As we contemplate this business item, are we to incorporate the public feedback we got at that time? Or is that, is that something that should be on the agenda? As I'm, I'm, I'm just questioning.
We're having a new public hearing for...
For this?
For this.
For this item?
Well, we had a public hearing, unless my notes are incorrect, back in April when we considered this. And I remember there were comments and there were, there was attendance. And so my question is, for the agenda today, are we to consider those comments from April? Or is, is it?
I believe we can consider those comments, but we wouldn't be taking new comments tonight, if anything.
Okay.
Well, it's not a pub, well, Mario can talk.
So, yes, all, all relevant data and comments from previous reviews should be considered. And, and as considered, there are provisions. However, no additional notices are required, and so no additional notices were sent out. So, the public has been three hundred.
This is not an official public hearing. This is just open to public comment.
Correct.
But as, as we, as we accepted those comments from April, we should be reminded of that feedback as we contemplate today's decision, I guess, is what you're saying. Okay. I'm good then.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes. The first vote is Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion does carry.
Okay, next, we need to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion's made and supported. Any comments or corrections? During none, take the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion does carry.
Next, we have public comment on non-agenda items only. If there's someone here who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item, this is their opportunity to come forward and do so. Being no one that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item, we'll move on to our business items. This, first one is PPL twenty-five dash zero zero one two. It's a request for special land use and site plan approval to construct a gas station and convenience store building with a drive-through restaurant at three one four zero six Ford Road in the C-three General Business zoning district. Mr. Ortega, could you start us out with your report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I'm here tonight to consider the revised application to the site itself, Mr. (inaudible) the public. The site itself are two adjacent lots at the northwest corner of Ford and Merriman Road. And the applicant is proposing to construct this gas station and convenience store building with a drive-through restaurant window, and then the associated gas station camp. Gas stations and drive-through windows do require special land use review and approval from the city. And one of the primary issues that we consider with special land use is its compatibility with the adjacent land uses and adjacent zoning districts. The original site plan located this proposed drive-through window on the west side of the building, and it was not here at that time on the speaker and menu location. The revised site plan now shows the speaker and menu location at the northeast corner of the building away from the adjacent residence to the west. The revised site plan also shows the pickup window is still on the west side of the building, but the building size itself has been reduced, therefore resulting in the distance in the west property line to the drive-through window areas and the address of the building is now proposed at thirty feet. The zoning ordinance does require a forty-foot minimum setback from residential property for commercial structures. Currently, there is a six-foot basic screening wall existing along that west property line. So, the plan iteration during the course of the evening should indicate the applicant, if sufficient changes have been made to this configuration to achieve compatibility with those adjacent residences and uses. If this proposed compatibility, proposed configuration is acceptable, and they feel that this proposed configuration can achieve compatibility, we know the applicant will still need to obtain a ten-foot variance from the zoning board of appeals for this current configuration. And I believe the current, and while each is only, I mean, while each variance case is unique, I believe their modifications are based on existing structures and previous approvals of a, of a ten-foot variance for our commercial buildings with the rest coming to forty-foot setback in place. But, once again, the planning commission must consider compatibility and also the use of adjacent property and how this would impact, this configuration would impact. The other primary issue for special land use is the impact on traffic. So, the original site plan proposed one full turn-in movement entrance and exit driveway approach on Ford Road, and then two full turn-in movement entrance and exit approaches on Merriman Road. The revised site plan now shows that an exit-only access drive on Ford Road is also restricted to a right turn-only movement. The applicant has indicated, they've begun conversations with the Michigan Department of Transportation, which governs the authority of Ford Road, and they have proposed, they believe they, the applicant believes they propose a configuration that could be acceptable to MDOT. As I mentioned, the revised plan shows two existing Merriman Road driveways currently on the site, and their approaches, and the applicant is proposing constructing two new, two new configurations for the Merriman driveway approaches. The applicant has indicated they have not yet had discussions with Wayne County on the road configuration issue, but they, they are the, their proposal is based on the fact that there are two existing curb cuts on Merriman. Their opinion that, that, excuse me, forgive me, they, the applicant, not, can speak to their own opinion, but I'm just mentioning this as a, some conversations. Their, their approach is to say, well, we're not increasing any additional traffic approaches on Merriman. You know, in the end, the site will need MDOT approval, and it will need Wayne County approval for these configurations. And while we do believe their intent will be to allow access, we also believe that who made them down in Wayne County will grant appeal, grant, and if they were to grant approval, would be for the design to have the most, the least negative impact on the, on the traffic in the area. So, the planning commission would have to conclude during the course of the evening if they wanted to make any kind of a motion, that this configuration would not have any negative impact on the traffic. As I noted, we need outside agency approvals for these. In the past, sometimes when those outside agency approvals were required, planning commission has granted conditional approval on those. However, that's not required. You can choose to pull off, so they have other approvals from outside agencies. With regards to special land use issues, you know, the, the site configurations have improved greatly in terms of the improvements. However, you always have to take in the other criteria for special land use approval, including impact on public health, safety, welfare, the need for the proposed use. Your opinions on that is utilized in determining whether we should grant, recommend approvals. Going into specifics for the automobile filling station or gas station requirements. Regarding the setbacks, I have already noted the thirty-foot set, proposed setback where it's forty's required. We also note that the zoning ordinance requires a twenty-foot setback for the canopy from the road, proposing eighteen feet, eight and a half inches from Merriman. So, the applicant would either have to revise the gas station canopy size or location, or obtain the variance for that setback of the canopy as well, in addition to the building. And there are some additional notes that we would like to see on the, on the plan, just to verify that there will be no outside storage of inoperable vehicles, and there will be no vehicle sales conducted on the site. And then finally, with regards to the requirements of the ordinance for special use for the drive-through window, they meet the requirements for front edge driveway, stacking spaces. However, we know that they are required to have control of the sound level. The revised, as I mentioned, the revised plan shows the location of the speaker and venue at the northeast corner. However, we would request details of those menu boards and those speakers to ensure the minimum levels needed to function are achieved without impacting any adjacent residences. This goes for the sound level of the speakers, and most recently, menu boards typically now are LED illuminated images and TVs basically, for lack of a term. And then there are methods to include a light sensor, photometric, photometric, light sensor, along with automatic dimming controls to ensure that while they're bright enough during the day, to be seen in sunlight, they're automatically adjusted to minimize their light levels at night. Because if you don't have those mechanisms, the brightness level on those can create excessive明亮. So, in the end, if the planning commission were to recommend, to counsel site plan special use approval, we recommend that that be contingent on site plan approval, MDOT approval, Wayne County approval, the city engineer and fire marshal approval. The applicant submitting revised plan that asks the two notes and details of the speakers, and then the other approval contingent on them obtaining variance for the building location and the canopy location if they don't revise the canopy location. So, those are specific issues related to special land use. There are other outstanding issues related to site plan that I can get at a later time. Do you want to tackle these first, or do you want all the normal ones?
No objection. Why don't we just go through the site plan? Yeah, can we just go through the site plan at this time?
So, with regards to site plan, as I mentioned, the applicant had done substantial revisions that reduced the building size, that reconfigured the orientation of the canopy and the gas pumps, and they reconfigured the location of the underground storage tanks and various robbery access points. Subconfiguration that we'd like to see included on the revised plan, I think, for the building elevations, the masonry color has not been indicated. Lately, some of our buildings have come in utilizing standard or gray color, the masonry material. Honestly, don't have a distinction from cinder blocks at times of those colors. We'd just like the applicant to know their preferred color for the materials of the façades, and then to, highly encourage them to not utilizing masonry, gray, concrete, cement color. They have provided a fuel canopy graphic on sheet SP two. And the elevation, and this graphic shows the elevation for the fuel pump canopy, including dimensions and under canopy clearance height of fourteen feet. The graphic also indicates that the electrical line will be raised to a height of twenty-four feet, and the cable line to a height of twenty feet, and then the maximum height of the canopy itself will be seventeen. And then the existing canopy, excuse me, existing cable electrical line will stay in its location by second site and going over the canopy for the gas pumps. That's their proposed configuration. They have indicated that they've begun discussions with DTE. For the applicant's knowledge, we did talk about, we did, I have handed out a handout from DTE indicating their preference that these, that buildings not be located underneath utility lines. However, there's not a specific requirement from DTE for that. They, they seem to be able to, to have that modified. They're, we're doing research to determine if building code does prohibit a building within an easement. And then the zoning ordinance does actually prohibit things like landscaping, signage, walls, and accessory structures in easements, unless that easement does permit the, the structure to exist. So, if the applicant wants to locate this structure in, in the DTE easement, and a minimum, like a revised easement would be required indicating that the structure would be allowed within the, within the easement. But that's, that's the, the mechanism that would allow for it to happen, you know, with regards to other issues, whether that is a best configuration or not, or whether that line should be, go around the perimeter of the site. That's, it's an issue for you to discuss and consider. With regards to parking, they have, as I mentioned, they reduce the size of the building. As a result, the amount of parking spaces proposed are sufficient for the reduced canopy convenience store configuration. And then there are, now they use nine spaces on site to utilize by the restaurant. If, for example, if they had a four hundred square foot rating, waiting area for a carryout restaurant, and then they have two employees, that would only require, by ordinance, six parking spaces. So, then there would be enough parking spaces on site for that. So, right now, they're not proposing any configuration of the restaurant space. That would be done by the tenant. So, at the time of tenant build-out, their CFO and their building permit would be reviewed and only be approved if there's enough parking spaces to support whatever configuration they have. So, it can be done, but it, but the specific requirements will be detailed when the tenant builds out the restaurant space. But it is technically, based on the reduced size of the building and revised parking configuration, there, there would be enough parking spaces we, our ordinance requires. With regards to the reconfiguration, they have shown a graphic for the truck, fuel truck delivery. It does appear to function adequately. The, a truck driving southbound on Merriman would enter the northernmost Merriman curb cut, drive around the canopy, stand at the fuel, underground fuel tanks on the west side of the build, of the site, and then exit the site in Ford Road heading westbound. So, that does look like it should function. They have not provided graphics for emergency vehicle or a trash hauler, dump, a garbage truck. So, we would like to see those graphics to make sure those vehicles can safely navigate the site. We also note that while, they're proposing a one-line configuration for the drive-through traffic, it does look like it should function, but we'd like to see the graphic for that as well, because it's a pretty tight turn around the building, the drive-through traffic. Landscaping, they provided. It seems to be efficient. It would be up to planning commission to determine if they need an additional landscaping, for example, along the west property line for screening purposes. There is a six-foot high masonry wall that's required already there. It's only up to you if you'd like to see additional softening of that wall with landscaping. And I mentioned the trash dumpster enclosure. They're proposing a new configuration on the west side of the site, in between the proposed building and the wall. It's angled. It looks like it does, might necessarily tweak a little that angle to allow for a trash vehicle to come in, pick up the, the, the trash, the dumpster effectively, and then do a T movement and exit the site in a forward motion. So, it looks like it should work, but we would like to see that graphic as well. And they also need to have some type of solution for grease storage bins. A lot of times, these restaurants require outdoor grease storage bins. They either can do that, or they could have a requirement that the site will use, use an internal grease storage system. There are methods that, that these fast food restaurants, or any restaurant, that uses grease, we store it in the building. There's a stick it, for lack of a better word, on the outside of the wall of the building, and a truck comes up and baking, and evacuates the, but the, the internal tanks. But that's something we've been noticing around the city that is, needs to be within an enclosure. And finally, the lighting is supposed to play, and these need to be cross-sessing up details from those open up requirements. So, in the end, once again, as with site plan, with special land use, conditional approval could be granted if you so choose, and that would be revolving around combining the lots that exist, obtaining the variances from the ZVA, obtaining city council's special use approval, and then revising the site plan and providing additional information plus the items A through F by recommendation. So, while that is a relative amount of requirements, I would say that the, the site plan has revised significantly to, seems like it could function, but whether it's compatible is up to you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ortega before we go on? Yeah, go ahead.
Mine's pretty easy. Just to clarify on the special land use, it's the drive-through that is creating that requirement, correct?
It's creating the gas station itself.
Oh, the gas station itself? Okay. That's the clarity I was looking for. Go ahead.
On twelve hundred square feet, how many parking spots are required?
For the, oh, you mean for the convenience store?
Right.
It is eighty percent of that, and then, I think, I had, that is ten.
No, those aren't.
It's one per one hundred and fifty of usable floor area, and then based on the floor, they have the floor plan in the building, on, on site plan. So, they have fifteen hundred square feet of usable floor area, and then that requires ten parking spaces for the convenience store.
And then six for the four hundred square feet of the carryout spot?
Right.
And that includes their employees?
Yes. Yeah, there's a table on site, on the site plan review letter, page three.
Yeah, I also, I thought I said there are seven, there's nineteen spaces.
There's, there's.
I'm coming next. I come.
Two.
There's three parallel parking spaces on the west side, adjacent to the canopy above the underground storage tanks. Sometimes people still.
Is there a common loading zones of parking space?
No.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. It's not counting the loading or unloading. It's, there's two spaces there, Mario, on the west line. Yep.
And then there's four along the Ford Road front edge.
Yes.
And then there's one, two, three, four, five, mid block, mid-site on the far west side in front of the trash, the dumpster enclosure and the drive-through exit.
Good with that? Okay. Yeah, maybe, maybe we'll allow the applicant to come forward and, and if you want to make your presentation, and then we can go on from there. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good. So, we can get started, and the panel has said everything that needed to be said, but I just wanted to emphasize on the certain, you know, things that we, we, we reduced in size, or we gave up, or we sacrificed on our side, you know what I mean? Many things. Starting with the building, we did set it back to thirty feet instead of forty in order to still have enough square footage to operate what, what the owners want to operate in for the carryout and for the convenience store. We were willing to go to a zoning board for the extra ten feet variance. We're hoping that, that's something that they can grant to us. Number two, we, I shrunk the building in, in, in a few different ways, you know, and then shifted it a little bit to the east and played with it for a long period of time in order to get to where I, I am right now. So, that was the biggest obstacle. Secondly, was the approach from MDOT. So, we had some, some talks, and with the help of also the owner's representation, the secretary that's not here today, but she, we were able to get a letter saying that they would approve the, the right-hand turn onto Ford Road. Otherwise, they were, we, I'm not sure where this project would have ended up if we didn't get that approval. So, they did, I do got an email. I can show you, it's just a, it's just a, an email right now, statement that says that they approved it. That's all it is right now. But I think, I mean, they're going to go along with that, you know what I mean? We can provide that. So, they're allowing a right-hand turn only. So, there's no traffic that's going to, you know, have a traffic implications like, you know, congestions or anything like that on Ford Road. Now.
Well, we've, we've had one or two other businesses that have done basically the same thing, only allowing a right turn out of their business, and people continually try to turn left, or try to turn into it from the other side of Ford Road, going in the other direction. So, it's very difficult to control that.
I mean, the only.
The way it's proposed, the way it's, the proposal, the, the way it's turned on the curb.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to make it impossible, somebody up at Ford Road, to make a right-hand turn into the parking lot. Because it's proposed to, also the curb to show that this is only can be a left turn. It's not going to be a right turn. Even if you're coming down Ford Road, you're not going to be able to make that turn, because the curb is going to stick out a little.
I mean, the way.
If you didn't have that access, wouldn't your customers be able to turn out onto Merriman just as, just as well?
Oh, yeah, just as well.
Yes.
Yeah, so, when you were here before, we discussed this, and you had pretty much agreed that you could do without that access.
No, we agreed based on MDOT.
We're talking about, we're talking without access on Ford Road?
I'm talking about the access out onto Ford Road, yes.
No, I think they were trying, well, what they were going to do is talk to the neighbor, neighboring building next door, the, the owner next door, and they had some extensive talks in order to combine one approach for both businesses. But while it was going good at one point, the owner just said, no, I don't, I don't want that extra traffic in my, you know, in my business. You know, he didn't like the idea. So, then we had to go to this alternative route, and we were able to, to get a green light from MDOT for that. It wasn't easy, believe me. There was a lot of people involved. I, I kind of looked at the emails, but at the end, I was, I, they didn't CC me on all that, but I, I ended up getting this email from the owners.
Okay. Was there any?
The other stuff I wanted to talk about, so you were concerned about the right-hand turn out. I mean, it's really hard for someone to really make that left. And then even though there's signage and restriction in that sense, these, these right-hand turn out from all sites, even if you go to places like Myers and, you know, [inaudible]. even if you go to places like Myers and, you know, Costco and things like that, when they have only right-hand turn out, I mean, you could kind of say the same thing to these kind of big developments. I mean, we're having this in a small development. It's gonna be, it's, the way that it's designed from MDOT, they designed, they still gotta go over this design one more time, I think, you know? Even though they looked at it, they didn't really comment on the curvature and stuff like that as, as of yet, because I didn't receive anything yet. But the, it kind of, you know, the curvature that the owners are trying, was trying to explain is that it curves to a point where it's really impossible for that person to try to make that left turn, unless he really wants to get into an accident, you know? And how many people are gonna wanna try that? I mean, one out of a thousand, I mean, I think they're gonna understand that there's a sign that says right turn only, and that's it. Going on to Merriman, the only comment that was on the approaches on Merriman was, the northern approach was supposed to be twenty-five feet setback from Ford Road, and we provided that. Now, as far as MDOT, I left it up to the owners to communicate with them, and I, I, till today, we didn't get any, I didn't get any response, but, but there's one person that's been in contact with them. She's on vacation, so we weren't able to, I forgot to ask her that question about the Wayne County thing, but I know she was in contact with, with them. But, I mean, if, if, if it means that after you approve this and, and Wayne County doesn't approve our approach to the north, I mean, we're just not able to put, they're not able to put this, we're not able to design this in there for them. So it's not something that's in my hand or your hand, it's Wayne County. If they approve it, we're good to go. If they don't approve it, we're gonna have to just landscape this area, you know, and close that northern approach closer to Ford Road. So that's what, that's how I can comment on that. As far as the dumpster, you know, Mario said his due diligence about the angle. We went back and forth on this design.
If I can interrupt you, it looks to me on your plan like that dumpster, especially with the gates open, is going to obstruct the drive-through for your proposed restaurant.
No, there's, there's enough spacing. We can, we can angle it a little, I, I don't know why it's angled there, forty-five, that much, but we can always angle it more, tilt it a different angle, just slightly, if you, but as far as the distance between the, the corner of that dumpster all the way to here, there's not a designated dimension on this right now, but I could see it's about, you know, twelve feet and, you know, something like that. I mean, this.
With, with the gate closed?
That's what I'm trying to say, the west area now is a dead area. You can't use it for parking, you can't use it, you can only use it for an escape lane if somebody decides not to order something, and he can just leave, or not pick up his order or something like that. I mean, it's really a dead area, basically. And while we're talking about that west area, we're, if you're worried about any kind of speakers we were talking about or stuff like that, or any kind of talking when, when they're serving the food at the, at the window or something like that, because now the speakers, the speakers were always on the east side, but maybe it wasn't labeled to the, where you, you could have seen it properly, but I did have a, I did have something labeled on the previous plans. It was always gonna be on the east side, but now it's labeled, you know, it's there, that where you could see it more. So the other proposal, because I said the west end was a little bit dead, we could add, you know, ivy, ivy varieties, some trees, something to buffer more of that noise where the owners, along, along with the six-foot-high screen wall, where the owners don't have to, you know, hopefully hear any, any kind of interaction in what's going on in this business. So that's something we can also add.
Yeah, the, the pickup window wouldn't normally have speakers, would it? Just, just a menu board, so that.
No, the menu board is only on the east side.
That's on the east side, so.
On, on the west side where, where the drive-through is, usually they just, you know, welcome the person and, and take their credit card.
Right, there's no, there's no speakers there to create a noise problem.
There's no, there's no speakers, no.
Okay.
We can plant some trees back here to avoid.
We did, we, we have that on the landscape plan, yeah.
To avoid some of the lights that you were talking about, so, I mean, the trees grow taller, it kind of like what Mario was saying about the, the lights of the, of the menu board. So as the, as the, as the, the green goes up higher, so it does eliminate the, the noise and it will eliminate the vision also.
Yeah, one, one of the things I was concerned with, with the menu board, where it's currently facing on that corner, was that they can be quite bright, and it could create a problem for traffic on Merriman. So are we talking about having automatic dimmers for nighttime on those boards, or?
I mean, the lights are, you know, most lights are on timers now and things like that. If they can be on a dimmer, we could make that happen too. But, I mean, most of that, that signage, like you're saying, it's gonna be buffered by a lot of landscaping that's on that, you know, in front of that, on the corner. I mean, alongside the south side, alongside the, the east side, and on the corner side, we could landscape it a little bit more to buffer that, any light or glare that's gonna come out from there. But also, you know, also realize that you're eighteen feet away from the property line. So, I mean, you're far away, I mean, you're not, that menu is not up on, on top of that, up along that corner. That's all I'm trying to say. You're eighteen feet away.
And the wall does stick out, right?
What's that?
The wall does stick out, so if you come down Merriman, this is blocked by the wall, right?
No, there's no wall over here, no, just landscaping, yeah.
I had a question for you gentlemen. The, so the, the, the drive-through, I'm still concerned about cars getting trapped, but how, how critical is the drive-through element of this development? Is that critical, or is that something that you've discussed as maybe taking out?
No, for this location, it's really important. I mean, the drive-through creates a lot of business for, for these, for the carryout, you know? I think, you know, the owners really want that to happen.
It just also obviously creates a lot of traffic for a pretty small space. I think a lot of my concerns go away, or, or come into play, if you will, with the drive-through, but I just wanted to ask the question as to whether.
And with the menu, with the menu board on that corner of the building, I can see traffic backing up and blocking your access to Merriman, the northernmost access.
I mean, if you, if the, I mean, if the guys are lucky enough to have that kind of business, yeah. I mean, some things could happen, I mean, you don't know what, what would, what's gonna happen if they're really busy. It, it, you know, it might just spill into, well, they're, they're not gonna have to, if you wanna look at it a different way, I mean, they're gonna have to come in on the northern approach if they see that this is full to where this approaches, so they don't block the, the southern approach. And they have like a little lane between the two approaches on Merriman, if you understand what I'm saying, that can make it work that way. But I don't think it's, I, I, I don't, I don't think the design was intended to, you, you know, in order to meet the code, and Mario can answer me this, we, we need a certain amount of stacking spaces, I understand. I mean, if you, I mean, the only, the only alternative with that is if we move that, that menu down to the back of the building, to the back of the building, in order to have more stacking space. Why the menus are, are, are away from the window, and then, and then from the window, how do you, how do you count stacking spaces, basically?
So that is, or an issue, I think it is an issue with the requirements. The requirement is a total of ten tech stacking spaces from the drive-through, the pickup window.
See, that's what.
From the window.
And so it doesn't get into the specifications of, as you're talking about, you know, the wait time at the window typically shorter than the wait time at the menu board. So I, I agree with both of you that at that, at that particular location, it's good for keeping the noise and glare away from.
From the residents on the west side, right.
And then it does create higher probability of, of stacking lane blocking Merriman. The alternative is to, to move the menu board and the speaker maybe midway behind the middle of the.
Halfway down the building?
Halfway down.
Yeah.
And actually, actually, if they move it halfway down, and then, then I guess if they put in a higher ivy varieties at that installation, six-foot ivy varieties at installation, along Crowder, then they could, then that would help with the screening and that. But the only issue then is across the street from Crowder, there's a vacant lot and then a house.
Yeah.
So it's like, which is, it's a.
Well, you could have issues with the light.
Yeah.
If there's no, if there's no screening.
Right.
So it would have to be screened in some way.
So it's a matter of trying to find that balance between the two issues.
Yeah.
But across the street on that end, that's commercial, isn't it? Or is that residential?
Right now it's a zone residential. And it's you, and then there's a, technically there's a vacant lot that actually is for sale on its own. It could be built as a standard home or an multi-family. And then there's an existing residence to the north, and then, but technically, those corners are planned as commercial. But someone would have to come in and request that it's a zone. Commission and city council have to consider if they want to endorse that method of planning to extend commercially for the north on Merriman.
My, I guess my concern with the whole stacking of drive-through is, once you get in there, you're trapped. I just pull up a lot of other businesses on Ford Road that have drive-throughs, and I did not see one that had a configuration like that that were actually trapped and you can't get out. So my concern is more from a health and safety standpoint, as well as blocking it. But if you go down Ford Road, I mean, I pulled up on my phone on Google Maps, there's, I couldn't find one that actually traps you in the drive-through.
Yeah, you get a car disabled in that line and you're stuck.
Yeah.
So that's why I proposed last time, if, if we were able to have an approach go out to Crowder, so they can escape in that sense, but it's not required. I mean, and it was said before by, by Mario too, that a, a escape lane is not required, even though we have it not along the backside of the building, or even the, or even going, entering into that drive-through, but on the west side, we do have an escape. They're able to get out of there from, by that, by, by the time they get to the west side, before they get to the window.
By the time they get to the pickup window, so much.
Yeah. But it's not required, I mean, that's the only thing I could find myself with.
One, one more thing regarding the lights, I just want to bring to your attention, is this not gonna be a twenty-four hour restaurant?
What are, what are the hours of operation?
Could be about eleven, twelve AM max, something in that range, like, I really don't know what the, I'm very sure it's not a twenty-four hour, because modern eatery does not present breakfast, okay? And they don't have enough capability to stay open till like two AM or three AM, where they're actually losing business that way, because they're not anticipating that traffic like past maybe eleven o'clock, dinnertime latest. Just, just a thought I wanted to bring out there, that this is not gonna be a twenty-four hour, just because of the light issue, or the sound issue, because of the neighbors, trying to put them at ease and keep them comfortable. I know sometimes it's school days and nobody wants to hear anything from outside, or people ordering chicken or sandwich. We totally understand that. That's why we kept it as far away from the residence as it could be. And at the same time, if there's any, anything we need to do, or you can help us with, blocking that, something off of Merriman, so they don't see the brightness of that light, and still, it's not gonna be twenty-four hours. So it's not gonna be an issue of.
It wasn't the landscaping.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be an issue of the light more than.
Well, the lights are gonna be pointed downwards, so I'm not sure.
And the menu boards can be tilted down, so they're not standing up straight when somebody's driving and they see it, so it'll be tilted more towards the driver and going down like this. So the driver, actually, when they pull up next to the menu board, they could see them. So you could play with these things, some angles.
So we provided a photometric plan too, I mean, if you wanna really emphasize on lighting, that shows that all the, all the decibels of lighting doesn't, doesn't pass more than zero at the lot line. I mean, it's at zero at the lot line, you know what I mean? So there's no light going out into the traffic, or even in that right-of-way where the grass is, or the sidewalk. So if they have a little, little shine, I'm not, I mean, you can't control a hundred percent, but other than that, the photometric grid shows the way it tilts and, and the, and the way it's reflected and all that, in a sense where there's not supposed to be any glare coming, going over those property lines.
Since you brought up the photometric plan, one of the requirements would be cut sheets for your fixtures, and they would have to be, the brackets would have to be such that they weren't adjustable. Once they were installed, they'd have to shine directly downward. And also, they wouldn't be allowed on top of the canopy or the buildings.
Oh, yeah, no, we never put anything on top of the building, especially for gas stations. I mean, I think used car lots do that and stuff like that, but not, I mean, we're just having wall packs, wall packs on the wall over doorways and such, certainly.
Okay, well, we would, those, those cut sheets showing the fixtures and would have to be provided along with your application.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much you provided over here, I'm pretty sure you did provide something, but.
Well, I think we had your photometric sheet, but I don't think we had details about the brackets or, or the fixtures.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we didn't, the engineer didn't provide specifications for it, but we are looking.
Was there anything else you wanted to address while you're?
So we reduced the building size, we talked about that, received notice from the MDOT for that right-hand turn, met other setbacks like the, the, you know, being twenty-five feet. We met the city code for that. Speakers for the drive-through, we talked extensively about. The dumpster rotation, if we needed to rotate it just a little more to the, if you're facing the plan to the left, it might just work a little bit better to free up more space, like you kind of indicated, that it may need. We met the parking requirements, any other questions that arose? The escape lane, I can't really say anything about that. I was, I, I mean, I'm the one that kind of brought it up, I like to have escape lanes and stuff, but if it's not part of the code, then we, we, you know, we wanna live with that, you know what I mean? And we need the space, actually, because we can't move that building, you know, toward the, the north, or it's gonna ruin that whole design that we created, but again. I think we, and then as far as the carryout, Mario answered that from my engineer, I think, providing only four hundred square feet of waiting area in the front. They're not gonna need more than that, because it is, that restaurant is, that restaurant or any restaurant that goes in there is designed just for carryout. They don't want people to be sitting around, you know, and, and next to the gas station and stuff like that.
Yeah, so you, you won't, you won't have a space with tables in the front?
No.
Yeah.
This is just, just like Eureka Eatery that they have over here, they just go in, pick up their food, and they leave.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay.
And then as far as the color of the samples of the building, the, the owner, the, the owners, but, you know, Dr. Fatty also, that also owns the one on Henry Ruff, is also involved in this. He kind of tries to be consistent with all his gas stations. We're building another one on, in La Bonia, on Plymouth and Merriman. And he likes to use the same materials that he has on the Henry Ruff.
Okay, well, we would like to see samples of those, so we could include that in the approval process.
Yeah, it's a, it was a red brick with a limestone look, a stone that was just emphasizing the entrance, but we can provide that.
And that was the only thing, there were limestone-colored and sized, complimentary materials at the poles and at the corners and at the, emphasizing the entrance to the Henry Ruff gas station. Now there are split faces block, there are brick.
Oh, okay, yeah, he does, he does use split face block, but if it's something that you would like to see, something that looks more like limestone or more, I mean, it could be man-made stone, but it looks like limestone instead of split face. I mean, that's something that you could, you can ask for in the, hopefully if we get approved, you know.
Okay, if you have nothing else right now, you can, if you want. Okay, uh, if you have nothing else right now, uh, you can, if you want to take a seat, we'll, uh, we'll move on and we may have more questions for you.
Okay, thank you, very good, thank you.
Uh, well, next would be, uh, public comments and questions. Uh, we have no public here, so we can move on to planning commission discussion and recommendations. Uh, we have a lot of items on, on here that need attention. I've got two pages of items from your recommendations that, that need to be modified or, uh. Documented. So, uh, does somebody wish to start out here?
I got a question on, uh, the canopy, the gas station canopy being built on the easement. Do you have an ordinance against that?
So we do have ordinance that states that. It's not accessory structures are not permitted unless the easement, uh, basically permits it. Cause what it is, is easement specifies the conditions within that easement. Typically, the existing easement would say no structures whatsoever in the easement. So it would be a matter of, you also, if that's the conditions out and that's the conditions that it couldn't be in there. The only way it could be in there is if the applicant spoke to DTE and then they revise, and DTE chose to revise easement to allow restructuring.
So is that?
That's typically how it works.
My next question, is that only for commercial or is that the same ordinance for residential?
Same residential.
Okay, Frank?
So I, uh, maybe if we just, um, spend a minute on the special land use. I guess what, what bothers me is, um, going back to the April meeting. We had a lot of resident feedback about the traffic and I was just looking at the minutes from that meeting and it was traffic flow, traffic flow, traffic flow. And just how, and I appreciate the creativity of the applicant, there's just so much going on in this small space. And, um, Mr. Ortega, you point out the forty-foot minimum setback. So, you know, we've heard from residents that are concerned about the, what's going on in this small piece of space and we're, you know, potentially allowing some variances. So could we just spend a minute on the variance, like how the commission feels about?
Yeah, sure. Well, there's two variances. One, I think, is unnecessary personally. Uh, the one cons, considering the size of your canopy being about one and a half feet too wide, too close to the Merriman. Is there any reason why you can't make that one and a half feet smaller so it's not intruding on that?
Yeah, we could, we could lessen the.
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
So that would eliminate the need for one variance. The other variance, the forty-foot requirement on the west side. Uh, they're asking for a ten-foot variance there. Uh, what does everybody feel about that?
Maybe since I brought it up, I, I just think given the drive-through, the way that it will be routed with the dumpster. It seems there's a lot going on in this space, so.
There's a lot of dead space over there though. I don't, I don't know if the variance over there is such a big deal as much as to the north and to the east where you're, you're locked in. I think that's.
But theoretically, you could, theoretically, you could, you know what I mean, create space anywhere, right? Uh, where you could, you could create space on the east side of the building by shrinking the building, right?
Making it smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah, or eliminating the, uh, restaurant portion. Completely.
I have a suggestion about dumpster. I mean, if twenty-two parking spaces is required and you're providing thirty-one, because that includes the, the parking at the pump. I don't know why, you know, I can't move that dumpster into two of those spaces, uh, mid-site where it says five parking spaces. We can give up two parking spaces right there and, and clear it right there in that corner.
Point of order here.
Do we, yeah.
Point of order that we're.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, uh, if you could, yeah, if you could just hold off for a minute. Right now is our turn to have a discussion and we'll bring you in if we have a question. But, uh.
So I've said my piece. I just have a concern about accepting a ten-foot variance. When we've heard from residents that they've been, they're concerned about the traffic that comes out of this property.
Yeah, it's definitely an issue, uh.
My concern.
Sorry, so clarification to you guys. The ten-foot, the requirement for the ten-foot variance will require them to go to the zoning board appeals to officially get.
Yeah, we're, we're just approving a contention on them getting that approval.
But definitely you can consider this shrinking of the build, you know, the, the building location, the building proximity being thirty feet away. As your criteria for special names because of its proximity to the property.
Yeah.
For us, for the building accessory structure on easement?
Yep. Uh, this is within section one thirty-four dot zero two two A. Location proximity easements are right-of-way. Accessory building structures or uses shall not be located within the designated easement or right-of-way. Except as permitted within an executed easement agreement. So they would have to execute an easement agreement with the prop, with the easement holder that would allow for the structure to exist within the easement.
Uh, I think the whole idea of putting canopy directly under the power lines in the easement is unsafe. And shouldn't be allowed. I think there are other options. I mean, I've talked to our local fire chief. Talked to building department officials. I talked to people at DTE and all of them told me this is not a good idea. That we shouldn't allow that. And I believe we have options. We can, or you can, uh, reroute the wires around your property rather than over your property. Right now, you have to put in one new pole to route it around your property. You may have to put in three new poles. But you would still be able to do it, I believe. And it would be a much safer situation. It wouldn't go over any of your buildings or canopies and, uh. It would be a safe, much safer situation. And you can even maintain the fifteen-foot recommended distance that DTE has. Along the back of your building by putting it out close to the street.
You wanna run it to Crowder?
Yeah, I would run it, I would run it down to Crowder across Merriman there and then down to where you can come back and reconnect it. So, that, I believe, is a much, uh, safer and a better way of doing it. And it's, I don't believe there would be anything to prohibit that. You'd have to get approval and work with DTE to have it done, but I believe that would be a, uh, a logical alternative. Um, anybody else feel about that?
I defer to your expertise.
I feel it's a better option than what's presented right now.
Okay, well, that, that's how I feel about that particular issue.
Can I just, I'm sorry, just to mention, maybe just for the record here, these were two pieces of property and that, that power line had ran between the pieces of property.
Yes.
Right.
There's still two lots there.
Right.
That haven't been, uh, combined yet and so it's in between those two pieces.
And basically, I mean, we don't have official documentation, but looking at the planted, uh, properties along the Ford, the north side of Ford Road. And just looking right across the street on Merriman, there's the alley, the alley existed behind road, properties that fronted on Ford Road. Alley existed and that's typically where we put in on utilities. That's probably why that, that line exists. And it goes, and it, it contin, that line continues, uh, along the north side of Ford Road all the, all the way down until.
Moller.
Yeah, and then even, but then even to, even past Henry Rough to, uh, Brink. And there's only a Brink where I, it's a grounder that it might actually go up to avoid, or on the Kingmark property. Cause it's not overhead. And then west, now going to the west, it probably stays in that location until the car dealership.
That's Moller.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's okay, we were the wrong guy, sure.
So yeah, so same situation, when, when a site has a larger use, the lines eventually are moved to go around.
Yeah, originally, there were buildings on each of those lots and the power lines ran between them.
Yep.
Now we're changing that, combining the lots, so we've, the best choice in my opinion is to reroute the lines around the property rather than through it. It's the only safe, uh, way of doing it. If that line should come down for any reason, it could energize the canopy and even the gas pumps. So it's not a good situation. Uh, that's that issue. Uh. Special land use. Okay, the impact on traffic of the Ford Road access. I have a problem with that too. We have two sections in our ordinance. We have access management. Which tells us that, uh. We need to promote safe, efficient travel within the city and minimize disruptive and potentially hazardous traffic conflicts, which I think that would create. Then we also have in the section on automobile repair and filling stations. In, ingress and egress. It says curb opening for drives shall not be permitted where the drive would create a safety hazard or traffic nuisance. And I think that putting a drive onto Ford Road does all of that. Think it creates a safety hazard and a traffic nuisance. How does everybody else feel about it?
I don't have a strong opinion on it.
Do you feel that?
I mean, I know people abuse, I mean, I've had McDonald's at Middle Belt and Ford. It's also designed where you can't make a lot and people do.
They do it anyway, right?
I think the bigger nuisance from having cars traffic is the substance most approach culture to Ford Road. That's where we're gonna have the big nuisance.
The, the one on Merriman?
Yeah, I think that's gonna be a bigger problem than the one on Ford Road.
Cause they're gonna try to go out on the Merriman and go north.
Yeah, if anybody tries to go up there.
Oh, I see.
Tries to go north on the Merriman.
We're gonna run into that problem every time there's a corner lot, I think, though.
That's right.
Cause we're seeing it every building, so we're gonna minim, we're gonna have that issue no matter what.
But I also believe it's our job to minimize it. We already know that we have current businesses that we're fighting that problem with.
But the only way this.
Our job to try to minimize it.
The only way this would work then is by combining these two lots like they want. And having that one that's up here that's not even on that corner lot. Because if, as, as is right now, if we only had this one corner lot being developed, there would be no curb cuts at all. And the only reason we have the one that we're okay with is because it's on the existing lot north. So that's the problem we're always gonna run into with this. It's always parking, it's always curb cuts, so.
What do you think the solution to the, uh, or the best solution for the curb cuts would be? Happy with, is everyone happy with the current proposal they're making?
And I suppose the reason why there's only, I'm sorry, that there are two curb cuts on Merriman is just given the, the volume of the property. Right, like you couldn't have one curb cut here that was maybe further north.
Well, if you only had one curb cut, they'd have to turn around inside the property and go back out the same way they came in. Which would be congested, I think.
Yeah, I'm sure the applicant spent much more time than we have on trying to make it as fast as it can be. I think the challenge is just the volume of traffic that could be on this property.
I have a suggestion. I would, I would, I would suggest putting the evidence of restaurant altogether. We need to build a better, moving the curb cuts on Merriman toward the park. And that would help congestion on Merriman and Ford Road. And it's not ideal, but if you were moving north, so we could fully prove it.
You would still have two curb cuts on Merriman?
Still two, but they would, they would move the building over and get rid of the restaurant altogether.
Yeah, that's. Yes.
Definitely, I think that, that these configurations are an issue. And the one thing I guess I would say, not being a traffic engineer or planner, but from my experience. Having that southern curb cut, um, kind of that far south. I think that would actually reduce the probability of people trying to northbound going in there because they just know that's just not gonna happen. It won't eliminate completely because people will do what they're gonna do. Then I would think, once again, probably the only way to do that might be to have that as a restrictive exit only going southbound on Merriman. But once, but in the end, I do feel, do they have communication with MDOT and MDOT is saying the Ford Road theory can work? I would be interested in hearing what Wayne County has to say, because Wayne County has the authority, they have the traffic engineers. And they could indicate what configuration is acceptable and whether. Now, I don't know if they, they use the same criteria as, as you would. Because you have to consider the impact of this traffic on, on Garden City and your, and Harts community. But having a professional's opinion on those configurations and locations and sizes might be beneficial.
What? Yes.
What if we did cut that one as well like that? The biggest problem with the McDonald's location is that there's an in and out on that one. And if you look between them, it's almost like kind of slightly curved up. People take that.
You can hardly see it when you're driving through.
You almost can't see it, cause that's the thing.
The problem with that one was originally as approved, it was supposed to be a raised curb. It was a raised curb and people were starting to have issues. And then on the weekend, that was changed to a rolled curb. So that's why that, that curb is now softer and depending on.
So people just drive over it.
And people drive over it for ease. And, and, and the key thing is there, as Mr. Wong said, is that, yeah, it's entrance as well and so they can get into it.
There's both ways.
Yeah.
Where I think the Ford Road one is more ideal when you're trying to direct traffic one way. And maybe that's the answer for this one too, is to have that one way.
Maybe, maybe that would be helpful to do if we had the south, one on Merriman also exit only. And have it, have it configured like the one on Ford Road.
In the Ford Road one, um, I would think that eastern curb on there could be extended more to further direct people to go. To the, to the west.
Make it more obvious that it's. And turn in.
Or is it that you're trying to put some kind of signage of all there, but then I can tell you fuck with that.
People ignore signs.
No, no, they, well, yeah, definitely they can draw signs if they are. MDOT wanting to let, uh, baller there and, because they are worried about it. And they have, so they have their criteria for approval. I'm trying to have signage and make it, quite in the obvious, people shouldn't do it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do what we can.
So I don't think it's gonna matter if we move the curb cuts up. That's Merriman Road. We know how that's gonna back all the way up to Crowder anyways at any given light. So it's not gonna matter where I think those curb cuts fall. I do think it might be important to have two curb cuts even if we direct the traffic one way. Just because if you have just one curb cut on this whole property, people trying to get in and out of just one, it's gonna, that's gonna cause more of a problem than the once in a while person trying to take this curb and make a right onto, you know. I think that's gonna cause more issues.
I, I would think, yeah, restricting the number of curb cuts would be an issue as if, because of the volume of, of a gas station or traffic. So having those relief valves at least exits would be very helpful.
What if Wayne County does approve it, you know, then?
Does it?
If they do, you know, if they do approve it, then they, you know. Then it, it meets requirements of the county, correct? So, sure.
At the very least, can we require it to be an exit only, southbound?
Yeah, that's what we were saying, we'd say make that-
If Wayne County approves it as it is, before us, when we make it, can we dictate if it's an exit only or a southbound?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
If we only have one entrance, what trade off?
It's like before, if you come forward, you're gonna have a problem with people to-
Turn in the left end turn lane, turn left into there?
Or stop them dead.
If there's no traffic, people are still gonna try to turn in.
I'm just saying if they're going north.
Yeah.
If they're going north, I'm trying to-
I get that.
First entrance, it's gonna be a problem.
So the only, really the only traffic that could enter the property would be southbound Merriman traffic.
Correct.
In one entrance.
And from a regional standpoint, the only thing I'm thinking is that from your typical rush hour daytime thing, I believe the, the reason this site might be attractive is, is the access eventually to Metro Airport. And the trucker's volume going southbound on Merriman.
Yeah.
So I would think allowing the access via southbound Merriman traffic is beneficial. I don't have any proof, but I would think would not, it would negatively impact the business, because the vast majority of people would be in southbound Merriman traffic accessing this site. You're not having people driving eastbound on Ford Road accessing this site.
Yeah, that's gonna back up no matter what.
No, those, those people won't access it, it'll be, all of the people coming into the site will be off Merriman.
Yeah. And I mean, that's already dictated by this. I would be more concerned about that power line than, than these-
Oh, definitely.
These ins and outs.
Yeah. I think we need to definitely address the power line.
They don't, they don't put an application in when they, they dictate that if that was a southbound turn on the Merriman, that doesn't go in on the application to Wayne County?
No, absolutely.
Well, it would if, if they, correct, how it's, how it's proposed is how they would make a submission.
So it'd be changed and then resubmitted, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But both kind of MDOT and Wayne County are, they kind of only react when they get an application. So MDOT, you know, gave a, gave some preliminary, but for the county, you have to, you have to give them a plan and money or else they're almost silent on everything, you know. So, so we can, we can say what we want here, but the county is the final say, number one, and, and they won't say anything until they really apply. You know, same with, I mean, we, we won't look at a special land use until they pay the money and, and we review it, so, similar.
But I guess what, okay, so if we, if we did say, okay, we want this approved with just a, a southbound turnout, and then Wayne County came in and said, no, you can do whatever you want, they can't override that from our, our standpoint, right?
No.
No, yeah, because you're, you're giving the approval for the special land use for that, contingent upon that.
How do we wanna deal with the access? Are we interested in making that one southbound exit only, or is it?
I think on the phone we need to discuss the power line, you know, if we make this southbound, we're gonna discuss the power line issue.
Oh, definitely. Actually, there's, you know, there's-
We've done that, so.
Right, there's, there's so many items on here that need to be either corrected or changed on the plan or just made a note of on the plan between the site plan and the special land use. I think we should go over those items, let them make the necessary changes and come back to us with it. I don't think we can give contingent approval on this with so many deficiencies. I think we need to see that everything is done properly.
So do we wanna go over, do we just wanna build on Mr. Ortega's list?
Yeah, well, I believe so. Going down, well, going down my list, I went down most, most of your list where you've made notations that things need to be addressed. And starting out with the site plan, A, we must combine the lots. B, have we decided on the forty foot setback situation? We haven't, I don't believe. We have to make a decision whether we want to approve it contingent on a variance or if, if we-
I didn't have a problem with that personally, cause that, that's such dead area, you're talking about on the west side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's dead area regardless, so that's gonna give thirty, thirty feet.
There is a wall along that area.
Right here. So from the walls of the building-
But it's gonna be thirty feet instead of the forty feet that's required, so they need a variance for that.
Yeah, but like I said, with nothing going on over here, I don't, I don't see there being an issue because of how the dumpster is configured. If this was parking or something like that, then I, I think that'd be a problem.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, so everybody on board with that, or?
Yeah, I can get on board.
In order, in order to do away with that problem, they would have to make the building significantly smaller.
I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm still just concerned with the drive-through just up with, with the dumpster, so maybe we, we talk about how to prevent congestion here, and the thirty foot is not the answer. Right, they get, like I hear what Commissioner Walls was saying about creating dead space, but it does solve a problem for how this dumpster and drive-through configuration.
But the thing is, if you had the forty feet, then you'd kick, you'd kick the building ten feet that way, correct? To make your drive-through here, but you would still have the problem on the back of the building regardless. So you'd have to pull the building forward ten feet, and then you're gonna run into parking issues here, pump issues.
I wasn't referring to the lack of an escape route. I was referring to where the dumpster, the dumpster enclosure and drive-through, a lot of these things are coming together, and one, there's a, there's a curb, a drive-through, a dumpster, loading and unload, there's a lot going on in this corner.
Yeah, cars kind of have to snake their way through it.
Yeah, so I, so if you, if you were to take this to forty feet, you would relieve this area from as much congestion. But I can live with, I think that's, that's a lesser of the concern.
Okay, so.
One thing I need to point out, one of the issues with the dumpster enclosure being in that location and not being in that corner where there are, what is it, five parking spaces?
Yeah.
Along the west line is because of the existence of the overhead lines running in their current location. If the lines weren't there, the dumpster could be in that, in those spaces. And then because there were no the overhead lines-
That would, that would solve an issue there, relieve some congestion.
We're, we're gonna have a little more congestion if we don't put the grease dumpster.
That would be on them, we-
Well, then if they move the, the dumpsters, they'd probably be able to make them bigger and-
If they move the lines.
If they move the lines.
Move the lines, that would, yeah, yeah.
They first have to move the line and then they can move the dumpsters.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think if we can agree on moving that line, we'll eliminate two of those issues right there. You'll get that dumpster moved down here, and also you won't have that line over the canopy, which seems to be our biggest issue right now, safety wise.
Oh, yeah, I, I think that's the number one issue, that line. It's got to be moved around the, the building rather than over it.
We'll have parking if that, if that dumpster goes down into those, that spot.
It would be much tighter.
But we'll have enough.
But it, but yeah, it would work, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and accept the variance request for the forty foot setback. We need to have you provide material colors of the masonry and samples. Next is the fuel pump canopy with the DTE power line over it. That needs to be changed to route the DTE lines around the property rather than over it, yeah. That would have to be represented on your plan.
And the setback for the, the canopy, that can be shrunk too?
Yeah.
We don't need that variance.
I think it's in another spot, but yes, this, this canopy needs to be shrunk by a foot and a half, so we don't worry about that setback. I would like to see the canopy columns wrapped in, in brick to match the building. Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, that looks good.
Well, while you're looking for that.
But not this in my son of a fangs, but I, I usually include the hand plans and then showing the colors and moving it with the rest of the soul.
Good, okay, well, that should be included in the plan, so. The truck maneuvering plans must be shown and revised as necessary, along with the, that would be fuel trucks, the emergency vehicles, and the garbage pickup. The drive-through plan should show inner and outer wheel paths for the vehicles, so we know they can make turns in there. How does everybody feel about landscaping? Are we adequate on landscaping, or do we, are we coming up short there?
I think the landscaping's fine.
I think if we're gonna allow a ten foot Merriman, we should require some other lightings on the west side in front of that brick wall. Something to give that person over there, providing that more screening.
Okay, so, some more greenery along that wall?
Yeah, to grow taller than the wall.
Yeah. Okay, along with moving the electrical lines, we can move the dumpster enclosure, because right now it appears to be obstructing the drive-through lane, and it doesn't provide for a grease container. And as I mentioned, we need circulation graphic for trash pickup. Lighting plan needs cut sheets for fixtures and a note stating that all shall point downward and not be capable of being angled after installation. Also, the lights shall be mounted on, shall not be mounted on the roof of the canopy or other structures. Then with the special land use, the only thing I have is that it must be contingent on site plan approval. And the filling station regulations, thirty foot setback for the west property, that needs a variance. The canopy, you agreed to change the width of the canopy to bring it within the twenty foot setback. We need a note on the plan sheet stating that no inoperable vehicle shall be stored overnight on the property. And a note stating that sale or rental of any type of vehicle is prohibited. As far as the restaurant is concerned, we should have an automatic dimmer on the menu board to reduce the light level in the evening. And we need details on the type of speakers and control of sound level. Along with that, approval would be contingent on approval from MDOT and Wayne County.
And the city engineer.
And what?
City engineer, number five.
Yeah, and the city engineer and fire marshal. We haven't really come to a decision about that. I'm not opposed to doing that, I think it would probably make traffic flow a little bit better on that southernmost curb cut. That would, we're saying it would only be a right turn only, yeah. Would that be acceptable for you people? A right turn only for that southern curb cut on Merriman? Okay.
My only, my thought, if I could just-
Yes.
You know, is that sometimes the two-way, the two-way entrance, you know, if your vehicle has your filling station, or your filling on one side, you know, like, you know, you think of yourself, when I go in, I'm like, well, I won't go in that one, I go in this one, so I can go around, cause it's on this side, you know.
Get on the right side of it, yeah.
And so I'd rather have the movement happen on Merriman as opposed to inside. That's my only thought, you know, is that, you know, I would wait to get to that one to go in, so I could go in.
They have two rows of, of pumps.
I know, there's two rows of pumps, but I still, I don't know, that's how I think. You know, it's like a rather, I always go in the entrance.
If one side's full, I guess you'd like the option of going around on the other side.
And that's what I'm thinking, is like circulation would occur that way, you know. Sure, sure, there could, maybe the signage, of course, wouldn't say, signs, signs don't mean anything.
You can always put up a no left turn sign, but-
I know, I know that, so.
Um, no, I mean, the thing is, we're sacrificing so much, you know, I mean, as much as it's important for the safety on the outside of the site, it is, there's, I mean, safety factors on the inside of the site, just like everybody else, talking about congestion on the inside where somebody wants to leave the site. I mean, there has to be alternatives, instead of just one option, now coming in and out of that site.
There'd be three options to leave, one option to enter. There'd be three options to leave, one option to enter. Correct, the northernmost entrance on Merriman, where they, they would enter.
That's where everybody's going in and out?
Correct.
They can't enter from the southern portion? Well, I thought you were-
I think it's, no, I, I think it's gonna create a lot of congestion right there on the southern approach.
It'd be okay for southbound people, but if we're, if you're gonna let-
For southbound entrance, not northbound entrance.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, we can put up a no left turn sign, but people will ignore that and do what they want.
The only difference is they're gonna drive forty feet and turn into the next one.
Yeah.
It's not gonna stop them.
You're referring to exiting the site from the southern side, not allowing the person that's exiting to take a left? That's what you're, you're proposing, right?
I'm, I'm proposing you create something like you did on Ford Road on the southern side of Merriman, where it's an exit only on to Merriman going south. If they wanna exit and go north-
Yeah, I understand that, oh, that's okay, I have to do something else, in order to enter the site, you are restricted entering the, entering the site.
Entering from the southern part of Merriman.
That would only be an exit lane.
It'd be an exit only, just like Ford Road.
Oh, exit, no, maybe more of an entrance, I mean, you're telling me there's one entrance to this whole site?
That's what that would create, yeah.
That's gonna be so hard for you guys, and you're referring to it so hard.
People going down Merriman, if they drive back past the first one?
That's what I'm worried about.
You know? Yeah, if they pass, they pass the first one, they can catch the second one.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they're gonna go to a different gas station.
Well, the only, the only other option we could have was to put up a no left turn sign there and hope people pay attention. So people coming northbound on Merriman won't try to turn into that.
I just think we're gonna have traffic issues when you have people in the line. I just think you're gonna have traffic issues when you have people in the left-hand turn lane forty feet from Ford Road trying to turn left into that gas station right there.
Now, on the sou, on the southern approach, you know, we can put a sign that says no left turn, there's no way to get there from there. But the one to the, to the north.
The north I'm giving. It's not the north approach at all. It's a southern approach on Merriman. The northern approach is absolutely fine.
No, but. He's saying, he's saying he wants to only have exit.
Exit only on the southern approach on Merriman.
Turning right.
Just like you deviated.
From that southern approach.
On the southern one, you would do the same thing.
Yes, go ahead.
We were really proposing that. Let's, let's get MDOT and Wayne County to say in this. And then we can propose what we need to propose, and then we can listen to any comments, and maybe then we can come into an agreement. But let's, let's see what the study does. Let's see, what are, maybe Wayne County is gonna say, hey, no. No exit, no entrance, only one exit, one entrance of Merriman. We don't know. Maybe Wayne County will say, oh, you can only have an exit of Merriman, there's no entrance. Then this whole thing is done. You know, that's what we're proposing, is that MDOT and Wayne County, let us come to you with a study, showing you that what these people have told us, what they allowed us to do as far as Wayne County and MDOT. And then we can have that discussion. But for us just to sit here and just kill this project, but we all know, what entrance to the gas station, that, the gas station, that.
Okay, well, if you would like to do that, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we table your application. Because there are so many, there's, there's two pages of items from Mr. Ortega's reports that need to be addressed. And especially the rerouting of the electrical lines. If we table it and allow you to come back with those changes, and during that time, if you want to talk to Wayne County and have them make recommendations, or MDOT, we would certainly look at their recommendations at that point.
I have a question too. How come we're, there's, we're not allowing entrances off Crowder? Is there a reason there's not?
We don't normally like to dump commercial traffic onto side streets.
I get that, but there's one on Henry Ruff, there's one on Harrison.
Well, there's a lot of them that happen.
Those aren't collector roads, though. Crowder really isn't a collector, you know, really.
Yeah, Henry.
I think it would just help alleviate some of the traffic issue we're having also.
But most of that lot's like right within that, what are you gonna come in and out, unless you were just trying to get out of line, you're gonna come right into the drive-through line.
I would prefer to keep traffic off of Crow, I mean, there are houses right there then, too.
His point.
Yeah. Having, having one come in off of Crowder would immediately put you in the drive-through line, not in the gas station.
And after the, after the ordering window, too.
I'm just asking, it's just a question, why, I mean, there's, there's entrances on all our kinds of side, collector streets. Collector side street, Harrison, there's houses right there, Henry Ruff, there's houses right there.
Harrison and Henry Ruff are both major streets, they're side streets, but they're major streets going through the city and they do have some.
They have slightly wider profiles. They typically have light, they're, they have lighted intersections at some points, like Harris and Henry Ruff. Henry Ruff definitely has lights on Cherry Hill and Anderson has others. So it might seem, it's a subtle distinction, but the intent is to have, have parallel roads to our major roads that alleviate the traffic volume. Whereas Crowder, really its only intent is to provide direct access to the private property in Crowder typically.
I shouldn't be surprised that a lot of people who have gas stations and stuff like that, people will look for the easiest way they can do to get their necessities and stuff like that. They don't like to go onto the main road, I don't lose safety, the intention, anything inside of them that says, you know, they're a British family, they're going through something, they like to take the easy way in and instead of taking the high traffic.
Right, yeah.
So what he's suggesting that you have an extra, if, if and only if, you know, the object lines can be redirected, like he's proposing, and we add an approach right there, there would be an in and out, it would, it would just be in addition to the safety of the
I just don't feel you guys would have as many people trying to turn left going north. They would turn, I think a lot of people would turn left onto Crowder and then enter off of Crowder.
Yeah.
Instead of trying to cross five, four lanes of traffic, three lanes of traffic to turn left into there going north.
I honestly think no left turn under the south entrance out of Merriman is a great idea. I think it's an amazing idea. At least allow people to come off of Merriman to enter the site, that's all. If there's, I totally see your point where people make a right turn, by the way, they wanna make a left turn to enter the site. I, I totally see the point. But having that sign there, no entrance or no left turn, I think that resolves, that should be able to resolve that issue. But also, at the same time, allow us to breathe a little, a piece of people off of Merriman, just to have easy entrance, easy access. Because people, yes, they might go in the first time as rush hour or something, if they, if they need to be adjusted, three months down the road, this whole site is gonna be closed.
I do, I do think the double entrance might be a good idea, too, because of what you said earlier about how you choose a gas pump. You get a lot of that. So what, what'll end up happening if everyone comes in on one, most gas tanks are on your left side, they're all gonna take that side and it's gonna create a weird turnaround thing in there, too.
And one of the issues, too, similarly, is like, there's really only single lane configuration on cars that are parked at the gas pumps. It's like between the gas pump cars and the Merriman Road curve, there's only one lane. So you might have a lot of people going head-on, you know, one wants to go north on the site, one wants to go south. Some even have to get, similarly like the Speedway situation, where they have that, that sign kind of thing, only one car can get by.
Yeah.
So it may be an issue. And one other thing, even though I know, the issue you guys are facing is that we're, we've referenced McDonald's several times. And so that issue with saying no left turn and no entrance into from that can be frustrating, but I would think this has a little bit of benefit if it was, that southern, southern Merriman curb cut had a McDonald's configuration where cars exiting go south, cars can enter on the, can enter into that south one going in and have a raised curb in the middle. Sometimes like a pork chop or raised curb, I want to say.
But an actual raised curb.
Yeah, raised, an actual raised curb. And then, if people see the light day, they're trying to enter to that one, then they have an option. They can just drive that extra twenty feet to the north and then make that left turn movement into the northern Merriman curb cut. You know, they'll have that capability of doing that instead of trying to force themselves into the site in that southern Merriman.
So then my question would be on a Ford Road curb cut the way we have it, why aren't we allowing westbound traffic to enter off of Ford Road? That would be the easiest thing for somebody going westbound, just put a no left turn.
Well, because they're just coming through the intersection, they're gonna stop right there.
They're doing the same thing at Merriman.
I know, but traffic doesn't flow quite as heavy on Merriman as it does Ford Road, I don't think.
I'm just saying, this would be more flow than if somebody came at a dead stop, either in the left-hand turn lane or the left lane, to turn left across three lanes of traffic into the site.
Right, like a.
If you were on westbound Ford Road, you can just turn into that site, it would be way smoother. Because there's nobody going westbound on Ford Road that can enter the site. Actually, there's no exit on Ford Road at all.
If we, if we do that, it's going to encourage people to turn left off of eastbound Ford Road. If we open that up to make it a two-way drive.
Okay with people turning left off of northbound Merriman? I'm just saying, it's a, we're, it's a double-edged sword.
That's the issue we're always gonna have with these corner lots. It's always gonna be that, because if you shrink that back down to what that lot initially is, then you're not gonna have any entrance if we keep this mindset of.
I'm just saying.
It's always gonna be an issue.
I agree. I'm just saying from the safety standpoint, for me, if I'm westbound on Ford Road, I think it would be safer to turn in off of Ford Road into this than to turn right onto Merriman, dead stopped forty feet, and then try to cross three lanes of traffic.
It would be safer.
There's, there's no slowdown lane there. There's, you don't have a deceleration lane. You've got people speeding up to try to get through the light and then somebody stopping just past the intersection to turn in to get rear-ended. Just, just like they do at Subway on Ford Road.
I'm agreeing with you a hundred percent. You have the same thing on Merriman. If you're looking at that aspect of it, you have the exact same thing on Merriman because there's no de-acceleration lane.
Yes.
Yeah, we debated this for like forty minutes.
Yeah.
I think we will need MDOT and Wayne County to weigh in, so I.
Yeah, let's.
I think we have the, my, my proposal would be we have the no left turn sign. I like the idea of the raised curb cut to discourage people from making a left out of the southernmost Merriman entrance exit.
Okay, so.
Table.
I think we should table it, allow them to make the, the changes that have been outlined on this report from Mr. Ortega. You can contact Wayne County and MDOT and see how they feel about the whole situation. And if you take care of all these other more minor items along with the major one as far as redirecting the electrical lines around the property, then I think, you know, this will be the only stumbling block when you come back and we can work that out at the time. So can we have a motion to table until the applicant?
We have two motions to make, special land use and site plan.
Okay, table both of them, okay.
So we'll just need to, need to do so somewhat well.
Want a summary of these things or do you feel like we've done that?
Do you?
I've, I've got, I've got the written text.
No, most of everything that I've brought up, okay. And I, and I took most of everything off of your report, so I think.
Specifically for special land use, I can leave the, the report as such, but then in the site plan, we can add those items that we've discussed in that motion. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll make a.
For special land use.
I'll make a motion to table the special land use proposal.
Second.
Any discussion? Would you take the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams. Chairperson May.
Aye.
The motion does pass four zero for the special land use portion at three one four oh six Ford Road.
We have a motion for the site plan.
I'll make a motion to table the site plan review as well with the added information. We all, I think he has everything, right?
Support.
I just had a comment. So the only comment I have with this is if they get the study from Wayne County and their proposals, they can ask why.
We have, well, we still have, we still have control over special land use.
And the site plan review is so up, yeah, we're not, we're not making.
Here's my problem, if, if they go Wayne County and Wayne County approves it, or MDOT approves it, then how are we gonna say, oh, this can only be a right turn, this can't have a left turn? Both folks say they're buying with it the way it is.
Well, that, the, I mean, they are transportation engineers that are making the decision, it's not us.
Yeah, so I, I think we can rely on their expertise in that case, maybe. If they, if they disagree with.
The biggest thing, like you had said earlier, was traffic flow, congestion, and if, if we don't, if we're not able to limit it before it goes to Wayne County, there's no way we're gonna be able to limit it after.
Well, we don't seem to be able to find an answer at this point.
Counselor's comment, I think Mr. Miller would have taken a note as part of the motion to include the the southernmost entrance on Merriman to be left only, and I think the applicant agreed that they would use, you know, take measures to make that happen. So I think we have influenced it.
Where are we? We have a motion?
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, yeah, take the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams. Chairperson May.
Aye.
The motion does carry to table three to one.
Okay, your application's been tabled. We'd like to see you come back with the changes that we talked about tonight on your plans. And in the meantime, you can contact Wayne County and MDOT and maybe get some recommendations from them about handling the traffic flow. And hopefully we can work this out when you come back. Thank you. Appreciate your cooperation. Okay. Other business, we have zoning ordinance amendment, discussion of proposed amendment regarding parking on residentially zoned lots. Mr. Ortega, can you tell us about this?
My, 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 I don't have any new language for you on that because I wanted to supplement it, because I will definitely have it forwarded the next week. It will be on, it will be in your packets.
Okay. Next, we have commissioners' comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Mr. Walls?
Nope.
Nothing?
Could you just say another sentence of what this is? I'm trying to remember. Is this the property where the, the owner wanted to?
Oh, no, the, you, oh, the resident parking.
Oh, this is the, the drive, the driveway. Okay, I got it. I have nothing else, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Kelly?
Can I only comment, why, you guys need to understand why I voted no or nay, is because everybody is in agreement on how much of nuisance we balance this with the law. And MDOT and Wayne County agree with that. This is gonna be the same thing.
But we still have site plan review.
We're gonna, we're gonna have issues anytime we have a corner property like that, I think. I don't know.
That's my position, and I, I empathize with what you're saying, but I don't know how you have a property owner invest in a corner lot without there being curb cuts and the risk of excused as some jerk trying to make a left, you know.
Can't account for drivers, I guess.
That's right, yeah.
The problem with the McDonald's is you have a right hand in, and then with that, we're gonna run into that issue and whenever we have that, you know, there, there's gonna be one way that you're gonna have to go into the left-hand lane to turn into that property, or we take one out. We're lucky we have three on this one. I just don't know if with one on that size property. Or if they quit this, then we cut that property back in half and then we won't have any entrances with our mind thought like that, is my only, my only thought.
And I think there's something else that the planning commission should be looking at.
Yeah. Mr. Miller, you have anything? Mr. Ortega? I wanted to ask if you had any idea when we might be getting a site plan on the plan development?
We are going to counsel for the final approval of the rezoning for Phase Two, the parking lot.
Their focus at the moment is to be working with the development authority and Wayne County on the aspect of financing. So I'm not sure where the site plan is on their, their schedule. I can remind them of the approval requirements within the PUD and the timeframes of their, of those approvals. But Mr. Miller might have more detailed information on that.
I've just, we're, the next DDA meeting is on Tuesday. We're gonna kind of have an informational session about what is proposed. Number one, the site plan, or the use that was approved. And then also talk about the TIF, the tax increment financing portion of the, of the, of the project itself. So a portion of the increased taxes would go to help pay for the shortage in the development. And so it's a brownfield redevelopment plan that would have to be adopted. So we're, we're learning about that. Teach, actually teaching the DDA about what, what all is involved in that. So I think once they get the financing portion in place, then we'll have some, you know, the plans will start to go forward, so.
Do you have any idea how long that might take?
Maybe another couple of months. So they have to, first of all, the DDA has to give a, a resolution just of support of the project. That's a first step, which may occur on Tuesday or not. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Then if not, it would be September, and then they have to go to Wayne County also to go to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to get the development plan in place, and also the DDA and city council. So there, there's a lot of financing.
Lot of steps, huh?
A lot of steps. They're also looking at trying to put another layer of financing on that will address and also give some tax credits to energy efficiency also. So they're just trying to stack different levels of financing to, to do that. Because there, there are a lot of factors in, in hand, at hand, of course, moving of easements, power lines, the demolition of twenty thousand square feet of, of building, a, a lot of that is, is costly. It's not, we're not Canton Township. We don't have green fields to, to just, you know, put, knock down some cornstalks and put up anything, unfortunately. So we're, we have to do things that are costly to get development, so.
Okay, the only other thing I wanted to mention was I don't know if anyone else has heard this, but I heard just a couple of days ago that Will Pister passed away on July fourth, I believe it was. Will, of course, was a longtime member of the Planning Commission and dedicated chairman for the Planning Commission. And I just wanted to mention this and send our condolences to his family. That's all I have. Next meeting?
For eleventh.
Is September eleventh, twenty twenty-five. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.